Now become afternoon. Thank you all for joining this meeting. And thank you all for the additional work and conversations we've had since our last meeting of October 5. Many of you were at the public hearing on this budget request. You've heard the passion and articulation of our students and others who spoke. There's also been a great deal of work that has been done, both your senior staff, principally by Senior Vice Chancellor Sapienza and Senior Advisor Shaw. And I'd like, most importantly, to thank Vice Chancellor Farrar and Trustee, or Vice Chairman Farrar, and Trustee Mojica for the additional work they've done. And I know you all have spent additional time in reading and reviewing the materials that have been circulated. The Chancellor is on the telephone, could not be here with us today, as we knew when we set this meeting. And Chairman Thompson is traveling today, so he cannot be with us either. With that said, I'll move to item number one on our agenda today, which is the approval of the minutes above quarter five. I will move that in just a second.
Second.
Any questions, comments? On the favor? Aye. Any opposed? Minutes carried. The second item is why we're here today, which is further consideration of the budget proposal and further discussion about that. And my hope is, and anticipation is, that we will be able to bring it to a vote for us and hopefully approve it, so that we can present it to the full board on Wednesday night. And I think the way to start that would be to have Vice Chancellor Sapienza review for us what's transpired since by way of additional materials, further explanation, and importantly, a change of some significance that has been suggested, which I think makes eminently good sense. And I think Senior Vice Chancellor Sapienza will describe that to us as well. So Matt, if you would.
Great. Thanks Chair Schwartz, and thanks to all of you for making time today for us to have this meeting. I want to echo what Chair Schwartz said. I want to thank everyone for their time over the last, almost three weeks now since we've had our last meeting. In going through all the materials that we sent out, in giving some good counsel and good advice on how to proceed further on the request. And I want to thank Budget Director Kathy Abad, who's here with us today, for all of her work in putting together all of the responses to the concerns and the questions that were raised at our October 5 meeting. So we shared a lot of analyses, a lot of data and reports with you, but there are two reports that we just sent out yesterday. And so, since we did send them out yesterday, I want to go through those reports very quickly today, just so you have the background from them. And then we'll talk a little bit more about the request and the significant change that Chair Schwartz mentioned. So this first report is what we call our quarterly financial report. You have it at your desks, you have it at your seats, I should say, and it's also up on the screen. And this is a report that we've been doing for many years that provides a quarterly status of where we are in terms of college financial status. And the report is about a 60-page report, and we did not include all the pages of the report, just to try to simplify it for you all, but just want to give you a sample page of one of the colleges here. And really, we want to go through this to make sure that we reassure all of you that there is monitoring and that there is oversight that's going on, and that there is a lot of data that we have available to us throughout the year that we could certainly share with this committee, so that you all are kept apprised of what's happening in terms of CUNY's financial condition. So this is a sample, and we'll take Baruch, because they're the first ones on the list. And I didn't want to take Queens College, since President Montez Rodriguez is with us.
Thank you.
But we'll take Baruch. And this is the summary page of what was happening for the last fiscal year. And this is the third quarter report for fiscal year 2016. Now, we're just about closed out with 2016. We're not officially there yet, but we're very, very close. And once we are, we will issue the year-end financial report. So this is the last report that we issued, which was quarter three. And you can see on this page, there's a ton of information about how the college is doing. So the top left-hand part of the page, you see the resources and how much has been allocated to them and how much is still pending to be allocated at the time of the third quarter report. You can see some other information there about revenue collection, and you get a picture of their total resources for the year. Just below that are expenditures. And we break the expenditures out by full-time salaries, adjunct salaries, part-timers, their OTPS, their purchasing budget, and then their centrally administered expenditures, things like fringe benefits and building rentals and the like. And so we then compare the total expenditures to the total resources, and you can see where we're projecting them to end in terms of that year-end balance row that's there. And we projected Baruch to end up in fairly good status for the current year. So there's a lot of data there on their resources, on their revenues, on their expenditures. Down at the bottom, we have the centrally administered funds, which I talked about earlier, fringe benefits, energy, building rentals, and financial aid, which is part of their budget that is not directly managed by the college, but is part of their overall budget and their expenditures. Over on the right-hand side, we have some data to support the, some of what's going on in terms of their revenue and expenditures. So for instance, enrollment. You can see how the enrollment is changing from, over the last three years, at Baruch College, for both undergraduate and graduate. And you can see that for fiscal '16, they were up by a total of 1.7% in terms of their full-time equivalent students. It's a good thing, good positive condition for their revenue as well. And then you could also see their staffing. And again, we have the staffing very detailed there by teaching, by academic support, maintenance in operation, administration, institutional services, all of the various details are broken out in terms of their staffing. And again, you see a picture there of recent history in terms of where they were in fall 2014, fall 2015, and spring 2016. So that, again, will give a good picture as to the expenditure, the expenditure flow of a college in terms of how much they're hiring up. We have some other metrics there at the bottom, revenue per FTE and expenditures per FTE. So again, this report, we wanted to share it with you, and we shared it over the weekend. And we want to, again, assure you that there is robust monitoring and oversight that's going on throughout the year. And again, this is a report that we'd like to hear from the committee as we go throughout this fiscal year, fiscal '17. This report, did you like us to share and like us to go over during our committee meetings for the current year? We're more than happy to do so.
So just for clarity, for my clarity at least, this is as of March 31, 2016, correct?
Yes. The report was issued after that, because we wait for the quarter to end, and then we have to work on the report. But yeah, we just agreed, Katz, about April 1st?
Yeah.
About April 1st, yeah.
And then I take it there is a report like this for the fourth quarter and for the entire year?
Yes.
Right. The fourth, that has not been issued yet, but it will be issued shortly.
The "will be issued shortly" is fourth quarter and the entire year, so both of those?
Well, it's just the entire year, yeah. It's just for the entire year, right? We won't do a separate one for the fourth quarter. It'll just be how they ended up, how each college ended up for the entire year.
So then just to understand the financial calendar, it's not until October, November that one can look back and see how the prior fiscal year performance appeared, correct?
Correct. On both the state side and on the city side, even though our fiscal year ends on June 30th, the state and city both give us three months to clean up and to do post-year adjustments. And so July, August, and September, there's still a lot of activity that's going on. There are open purchase orders, for instance, that have to be closed out. There's still some payrolls in July that are hitting that are for, for work that was done by faculty and staff in June. So we have about three months to clean up. And then in October, we start working on a year-end report. So we should have that issued within the next few weeks.
Okay. The last question for me about this, the budget request that we are being asked to review takes into account, although the reports haven't been yet issued and approved, takes into account the performance of all of last fiscal year, correct?
Correct, yes.
Any other questions or comments yet?
I have a couple of questions. Matt, in the spirit of shared governance, the OTPS number, we'll take Baruch's as an example of 11 there for fiscal year 2016. Is that, can we have an expectation at the college level that that's, a breakdown of that number is something that we should be expecting college budget committees to be evaluating?
Yes. I think in terms of getting more information about that OTPS spending, whether it's contractual or supplies and materials, or travel, or any of the OTPS categories that, yes, at the detailed college level, and in terms of governance, as you say, that that's something that the college should provide to the elected faculty and students.
And also-
You both talk very freely about OTPS. Tell us all what OTPS is.
Other than personnel services.
Thank you.
Sorry.
It's the purchasing budget.
What's that?
Money to buy things.
Right. Stuff.
And Matt, also another question, where we look at the expenditures per FTE, and we see Baruch's at 14-some-odd thousand, and we see there's a variation across the campuses, some of which is an issue of size and allocating overhead across their size, whatever it might be.
Sure.
But do we have any sort of target number that we think makes sense? Do we have any national standards that we look at? How do we compare to SUNY in terms of expenditure per FTE? Do we know any of that?
We do, we have done analysis over the years in terms of comparing to external peers, and we can share that with you. At the end of every fiscal year, in addition to doing the year-end quarterly report, as Chair Schwartz brought up just a couple of minutes ago, we also do a very detailed year-end expenditure report, which is just on expenditures, but it provides a lot more details to the expenditures than what you see here. And in that expenditure report, we do have charts and bar graphs that show what the spending per FTE was at each campus. Now, again, we don't, we don't target to say, here's what you should be spending at each campus, because each campus is different. Colleges like Baruch has faculty whose salaries are probably a little higher than it would be at some of our other senior colleges, and so that number could be a little higher. There are scale issues. Some of our smaller campuses will have higher per FTEs, because everyone needs a registrar, everyone needs a Bursar, even if you have 5,000 students or you have 25,000 students. So there's not a standard that we set, but we do provide the data in terms of just looking at what the comparisons are.
And in terms of looking at other colleges? Because we compare ourselves with other colleges in terms of our tuition, et cetera. I'm wondering, do we also have some comparison in terms of our expenditure?
In terms of, like, what you said, with SUNY or some external?
Well, you showed us a bar chart at a prior fiscal meeting that showed sort of where our senior college tuition, how it compared to other colleges across the country or other states, I think.
Yeah.
You gave us some for community colleges.
Yeah.
But I'm just wondering, on the expenditure side, just in a cubo, or somebody gave you that information?
Yeah. That's something that we could put together and share with the committee at our next meeting.
Thank you.
Can I have one more question? Can you explain what the red means? Some of the text is in red, so we lack.
Yeah, the text, the data that's in red is a negative. So for instance, you know, if you look at that first line, campus-based allocations, Baruch had a change of a minus $4,212,000 in fiscal year '16. We did 3% reallocations to the colleges this year. So anything you see in red is a negative change compared to the prior year.
In that example you just gave, what about the pending allocation? Is that netted against that negative change?
The pending allocation, yeah, these are funds that we have not yet given out. Now, you may say, well, it's the third quarter, why haven't you given out almost $2.8 million to Baruch College yet? These are resources that we provide to the colleges based on certain expenditures. So the best example I can give you is sabbaticals. When faculty take sabbaticals as part of the, two contracts ago around with the PSC, we set aside funding to pay for the costs of backfilling those faculty on sabbaticals. And so we provide those costs to the colleges at the end of the year, when they tell us, here's what my actual costs were. We don't give them $2.8 million, and we say, well, if your costs are only two, you get to keep it, or if your costs are four, you have to eat it. We give them what they actually spend. And so we set aside these funds at the end of the year, when we know what the actual costs are, we then allocate it.
I'm sorry. My question was simply, would that potentially reduce the negative campus-based allocation number?
Yes, yes.
Right. So that Baruch might in fact not have a reduction of 4.2. Okay.
Right, that's clear.
Any other questions or comments about this document?
I just wanted to know, are there any specific do's and don'ts that can be conducted financially on the college campuses? So is there something that the Board of Trustees needs to know that they are a don't-do and a do kind of stuff? Are there parameters that are set in the way?
Yeah. Certainly, especially with the, with the purchasing budget, with the OTPS budget, we have policies and procedures, manuals that we have issued throughout the year in terms of those type of expenditures, whether it's travel, or whether it's other types of purchasing, contractual services, about how colleges, you know, like you said, the do's and don'ts, they're pretty closely tied to what the state and city controller procurement regulations are. But yes, we have those, and we can, we can share those with the trustees.
I think the, I've seen a document that's been circulated to our presidents of those do's and don'ts, and I thought it had been sent to members of this committee most recently, but perhaps not.
Yeah, I don't, not in terms of this type of spending. We sent out something recently regarding the non-tax levy procedures. That went out from, from me and Senior Vice Chancellor Schaefer, and that went to this committee. But in terms of tax levy spending, yes, we have several policies and procedures manuals we can-
So that would be helpful then to certain-
Yeah. Okay. So let me go to the next report.
No more questions about this document. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Let me go to the next report, which really takes that quarterly report and builds on it. And this report is marked draft, because we have not formally issued it yet, but we did want to share it with all of you, so that you, again, get some assurance that we are trying to put together information for both the trustees and the university community in terms of our public reporting on universities' expenditures. So this is a new report that we have developed over the last several months, and I want to recognize University Faculty Senate and Trustee Conway, because part of the reason we put together this report is that they have been requesting a report of this nature. And this is a report of fiscal year 2016 of our entire expenditures for the year and broken out into categories. And again, it's draft, because fiscal year '16 is not, is not closed out yet. But we break out, on this first page, broken up by senior colleges and community colleges, by college, total expenditures for those colleges. You could see on the right-hand side of the page, that middle down, colleges and shared operational costs of energy and building rentals. You could see, spent about $93 million in energy this year at the colleges, and about $77 million in building rentals. And then down at the bottom, you see the category called shared services. So I think, as you all know, in addition to the college expenditures, we also have the system office at the university and the expenditures at the system office. And what we attempted to do in putting this report together is to break those costs out, those administrative costs out, to say, what are shared services that are being done at the system office on behalf of the campuses, and what are things that are being done at the central office? And so the shared services amount there is $116 million. And so we wanted to have that on the college page, because that $116 million is really being spent on behalf of the campuses. And you can see, you know, some of the large items, and their largest being IT operations. You know, the IT office, that's part of the system office, is really there to support what's happening on the campuses. And so those are the shared services amounts in support of the campuses. And you can see the pie chart there in terms of the breakout of senior colleges, community colleges, energy, building rentals, and shared services. So that's the first page. The second page is those central office costs. So again, we looked at central administration. You can see by each of the central areas, I'll pick out my area, financial operations, we're spending a little over $6.8 million on that. And then the central operation was the energy and the building rentals costs for the central offices. And then that pie chart at the bottom, I want to point out, you could see the combination of all of the areas of our total operating budget, senior colleges, community colleges, shared services, central administration, energy and building rentals. And so central administration, we spent about $50 million, a little over $50 million in 2016, about 1% of the overall expenditure base. Shared services, which is through the system office, but on behalf of the colleges, was about 4%. So the total, if you add those up, is about 5% of the total university expenditures. And what we did hear was, and I want to deflect all of the credit to Kathy for the work of her office, they sat down with every central office and went through the operations of that office and said, what is being done that's on behalf of the campuses, and what's being done that's truly a central office function? And tried to parcel out those costs that way. Now, this is a new report, so actually what we are going to do before we formally issue it, in terms of, one, we want to close out the fiscal year to make sure the numbers are accurate, but two, is we'd like to have some type of external review done, just to make sure that the assumptions we used in terms of parceling out what's central and what's shared services, that the methodology that we used was sound. So that's another step that we're going to take before we formally issue this report. But we wanted to make sure that all of you had it, again, to give you some reassurance about the monitoring that's going on, and also to give you some information about the overall university budget.
Cecilia.
On the first page, immigration services. Could you explain a little bit more about that?
Sure. So immigration services, we have the CUNY Citizenship Now project, that's run by Dr. Alan Wernick, that provides immigration services not only to CUNY students, but really for the entire city and state of New York. They're providing, there's immigration centers throughout the five boroughs. And so even though that's budgeted as part of the system office, it's really a service that's being done on behalf of the campuses. And so we include that as part of the shared services cost.
Following up on that question, could you note, let us know which one of these, on the shared services again, which one of these can be attributable to, back to a college, right? And so that you can disaggregate those costs among the universities? And which ones are really a central function that are in service to the institution at large? Because I think, I think it's a combination of both, and so it's really not a shared service, because a shared service would mean that there's some dollars that could be attributable to me as Brooklyn College, let's say.
Right.
So if you could make those distinctions, that would be helpful.
So Trustee Cortez Vasquez, everything on this first page, on the shared services, is what we're determining are the costs that are on behalf of the colleges.
So then how-
All the costs on the next page, on the central administration, those are the costs that we're saying, those aren't really in support of the colleges, those are really central office costs. And so their breakout is there. Everything that's in the shared services area is on behalf of the colleges. So I'm going to give you an example.
But these are all central administration, and these are all administered by a director or a leader at the central administration?
Correct. And I'm going to give you an example I use a lot when I explain this, and it's, and it's an example in my office. So in my office, we have a unit that administers processes, all of the financial aid checks to all of the students throughout the whole university. So these aren't the people that are making the determination about how much TAP or Pell student gets, but once that determination is made, these are the people that are actually cutting the checks. So we have eight people in the Office of Budget and Finance that do this, that cut the checks for all the students that get financial aid in the university. So they're part of my office, but the costs for those people, we're including in shared services. Because by having it done by those eight people, we're really actually generating a ton of efficiencies, because if we had to have every college do that, cut the checks, you'd probably have to have 40 to 50 people at the colleges in total do it. So we can do that with only eight. And so they're part of my office in terms of their function, and they report to me, but we've included them in shared services here.
So then, to that point, I just, I'm looking for clarity, right?
Sure.
So, and I totally respect and appreciate your point. However, I also know that there's an athletic cost in the universities. There's probably some HR cost in the universities. There's health and safety, and I can't distinguish how this category would be different from, from those categories. And it starts looking as if these things are fungible, when they really might not be.
Yeah.
So I'm just not clear.
No, I understand. And our, our goal, when we formally issue this report, is we want to include with this, because we understand that there's going to be those questions, is to have descriptions for each of those areas, so that we can explain what's included. So for instance, again, going back to the example of my office, what's included as a shared service from the Office of Budget and Finance, and what's included as a central office cost in the Office of Budget and Finance. So as we get closer to issuing this report, which I think we're very close to doing, we'll include those definitions, so that there'll be more clarity as to what's central and what's shared.
Because for all intents and purposes, and this will be my last question, Barry, but for, or my last statement, for all intents and purposes, that, if I were just reading this, that would just be central administration. And you're just sort of giving us the categories of central administration that you're supporting. But for all intents and purposes, that's, it's not as, it's not as if it's back in, everything is back in service to the universities, because that's our reason for being, right? So that would still be a central administration cost, and I think that disaggregating in this way doesn't make sense to me.
I think it's a very good question you've asked, and I have a follow-up question to it, related. If you take something that's a common heading, under shared services, you have university relations. And then under central administration, we have university relations.
Right.
The total is about, you know, $10 million.
Right.
What's the distinction with difference between those two, in each of the, on the one end, shared services, and on the other, central administration?
I think the university relations, a good example of what's in shared services, is advertising. So university relations does advertising on behalf of the colleges. And, you know, all of that is on behalf of the colleges. You know, we're certainly not advertising for, you know, central offices. So that whole cost that university relations will do on behalf of the campuses will go on shared services. Other things will be, other things that university relations does, whether it's, you know, things here at central office, some of the, some of the publications they put out, those might be part of-
Yeah, media relations.
Media relations-
Governmental relations.
Will be part of the central office.
Nevertheless, we spent centrally $10 million on a heading called university relations, and then you all allocated three of those 10 to shared services and kept seven at central.
Correct, correct.
And do these numbers combine, the 116 plus the 50? Do they reflect the, I think the number was 6% reduction that was imposed?
Yes. And we, that's, we can share the same report for 15, but yes, I think in- central office, if I have the numbers correctly, that in 15, that $50 million was 55. I don't recall what it was for shared services, but yes, that overall 6% reduction that we achieved in fiscal 16 will be reflected when we compare 15 to 16.
And my last question about this, under central administration, I'm not aware of any of our board members who get paid. What's the $1 million for Board of Trustees? Where are we spending that money?
This is basically the staff of the Board of Trustees, the wonderful people that are, you know, some of the wonderful people that are sitting at the table here, and some of the purchases that are done on behalf of the Board of Trustees. Thank you.
This kind of builds on the same question. The building rentals piece, what is that?
Building rentals are facilities that we lease for both, you know, and we have components here for the colleges and for the central office.
So the central office, building rentals are in a separate, are in a separate pie?
Right. That $8.7 million that's under the central operations cost, those are leased facilities for the central office.
For the central office?
Yeah.
So if you wanted to look at the central office, like personal service costs and building costs, it would be the 116 plus the 86?
Well, the 116, we're saying are shared services.
Oh, I'm sorry. So, because everyone's already asked those questions. The central admin cost and the building rentals costs together because the building rentals cost is actually for the central administration?
Correct, correct, yes. Absolutely.
Any other questions about this?
I just wanted to follow, excuse me, the capital planning and construction?
Yes.
What is that?
That's for the entire Office of Facilities Planning and Construction Management, all of the folks that we have not only managing our capital budgets, but also all of the project managers for all of the facilities that are under construction. That entire office is, is part of that, a part of that number.
Matt, I think it would be helpful when you finalize this report, for the categories that are listed under shared services, that we have a light category under central, even if the amount is zero. So for example, if CUNY TV is 12.8 for shared and it's zero for central, let's show that, but if it's something else, let's show it, just so that they foot, and you can see what the total is for those categories.
Good point. Any other questions about this document? Thank you, Matt.
Okay, so now let's get to the request. And so the budget request, as Chair Schwartz mentioned, had once again been changed, that we want to mention to you. But I also want to point out some of the other formatting changes that we made to the request since we last met on October 5th. And so, I'm putting up here on the screen, this is page three of the request, I believe. Oh, I'm sorry, page two of the request. The funding pies, you know, at the last meeting, we had talked about splitting out those pies and showing them in more detail. And so you could see there, we've added the funding that comes from TAP for our university to the state slice. And what we've also done is, the amount of tuition, we've also broken up into greater detail. So we have there, you see, state and TAP on the left-hand side is 54%, city support is 11%. And then the other four slices are the tuition components, and we broke it out by category there. So undergraduate students is 16%, graduate students is 6%, from federal, from hell and from other federal sources will be 8%, and then scholarships and waivers will be 5%. So out of pocket from the students is essentially 22%. 16% from undergraduate students, 22% for graduate students. We have that same look on the right-hand side of that page, but on the right-hand side of that page is per FTE. So that's, instead of a percentage amount, is a dollar amount per FTE. So we've made changes like that to the document as per the conversation that we had at our October 5th meeting.
Matt?
So I wanted to point that out.
On that, I'm not suggesting we change it for this presentation, but at a future meeting, can you tell us what proportion of the students are not eligible for financial aid? So for example, in that undergraduate and graduate students who have 22%, what proportion are international students that might be paying full freight as opposed to New Yorkers?
Right, right, absolutely. Yeah, we can, we can provide that. Certainly the graduate students, you know, there's very little, no financial aid for them. But the undergraduate students, yeah, we can, we can certainly break that out. So let me get into the item that we've been mentioning about the, this one significant change that we made to the request. This request includes, excuse me, an additional $35 million item that we're requesting money for. So you recall on October 5th, we were talking about a $200 million request in terms of additional funding for last year. We are now, this request now includes a $235 million ask in terms of increased funding for next year. And the $35 million comes from, from one initiative, and it's something that we're calling Faculty Partnership for Student Success Initiative. And I believe that the narrative for this is on page 15, which I put up there on the screen. But I'll, I'll talk it through and want to make sure that you're all aware of it and all, all comfortable with it, and we can answer any questions that you have. So in the recent collective bargaining agreement that we had with our faculty and the Professional Staff Congress, there was an addendum to that agreement that said that the university and the union would both be committed to working as part of the next round of bargaining to looking at ways where we can reduce the faculty workload. Faculty workload currently for the senior colleges is 21 contact hours, for the community colleges, 27 contact hours. And so the agreement calls for that the university and the union would put together a labor management committee that would meet and discuss how we can reduce those, that workload by three hours. We've actually had the first labor management committee meeting last week. And so what we're asking for here is $35 million to help fund those costs. And this is going to be a wonderful thing, not only for our faculty, but, but more importantly for our students. Because what the faculty will do with this reduced workload, if we can come to agreement, is have more office hours available for students to meet with them, provide more advising for students, certainly there'll be more time for research for the faculty as well, but our students will have more direct contact and advising with the faculty with these reduced workload hours. That's what our goal is as part of this overall initiative. Obviously, it costs money because you have to backfill those, those working hours that the faculty are now currently providing, and so that's where the $35 million would come in. And so, we're requesting $35 million from the City of New York to fund this initiative. And that is the major change from the document that you saw on October 5th. So I want to make sure that everyone's aware of that and that we can answer any questions or concerns you might have about that initiative.
On the pie chart that you showed us just a few minutes ago, city support of 11%, is this $35 million part of that 11%?
Well, it's on the chart that's going to, that I'm going to pull up just in a second, Chair Schwartz, is it's here on the fiscal 18 chart?
What page are we on?
Page five.
Sorry.
Page five.
Page, thanks, Karen. On page five, this proposed 18 operating budget, yes, the city support number of 13%. That includes this $35 million ask.
And the resolution that's in front of us is the 235.6, which includes this?
$35 million, correct. The resolution has been updated to include that.
Questions or comments? You're next.
Yeah, I just want to ask, when we put the ask and, is there a contingency, just in case we fall short of the ask?
Absolutely. This is a request.
So I'd like to see those side by side so that we know what impact it will have on, on the, on the university itself, on the students in particular, so that, you know, we all as trustees know exactly how we're going to approach it to make sure that we can achieve this, but then if we don't want?
No, that's a really good point you raised, trustee Clark, which is, this is a budget request. This is what we're requesting, we'd like to see in our budget for next year. But, but after the new year, between January and April, when the governor and the legislature hammer out a state budget agreement, and then in the spring and in, between April and June, when the mayor and city council work on the city budget, once those budgets are done and we know how much has been appropriated for CUNY, then we'll make decisions on what we can afford and what we can't. That's in our request. So this is a request. And then, once those budgets are known at the state and city level, we'll have to make determinations on how much of the request we can, we can actually fund.
Can, can I ask?
Chair, please, please.
So, and I would like some background on some of the state data. Because if I remember correctly, this 2018 proposal reflected a $58 million increase to the City of New York. Is this 35 included in that or is this beyond that?
It's additive to the 58.
So then what's the increase that we've asked the state for?
So we're asking the, the city for a?
So we're asking the city now for?
For a $93 million increase.
$93 million rather than the?
Right.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
And then, so what's the increase that we're asking of the state?
State increase, I believe, is 65 million, yes. And I just pulled it up there on the screen on page six, 65.5 million dollar increase from the state.
And then that was to support what? Because I remember in this, in the, in the city, it was to do a little TAP gap.
Right.
It was a recognition of inflationary costs.
Correct.
And then the third item was?
Was in general support of the senior.
General support of the senior colleges.
Senior operating colleges.
Right.
What we're asking from the state?
$20 million for that.
Right, we're asking for the state to fully fund our mandatory costs at the senior colleges, fringe benefits, energy building rentals.
So this, this one also includes an inflationary?
Yeah, the inflationary cost from the prior year, correct. We're asking for $5 million of additional senior college operating support for the priorities that are outlined in the master plan. And then we're also asking for the state for a $250 per FTE increase to our community colleges. And so that's 10 million. Now, a $250 base aid increase will generate more than $10 million, but we're being conservative here, and this again goes back to what we talked about at the last meeting, because of the softness in our community college enrollment, because enrollment's gone down in community colleges this year, we want to be a little conservative with this number and, and only count on $10 million in our request next year in case the enrollment continues to be soft on the community college side. So that's what we're asking the state for, fund our mandatory needs, provide some support for the senior college priorities in the master plan, and give us a $250 base aid increase for the community colleges.
Trustee Monika?
The tuition increase that's proposed, does it, does it reflect an increase in the TAP award that goes along with it? Is that reflected here at all?
Yeah, the, in terms of the TAP gap increasing?
Page 23, which shows the increase right through it. So do you have, as you ask for $250 in increased tuition, is there a cost of TAP going up as well?
Yeah.
That the state would pay for?
Right, the TAP gap would, would increase with every tuition because we have at the senior colleges, that amount is, is not reflected in here. But, you know, we're, we're requesting from the city a $10 million increase to help fund the current TAP gap. But the, but the, the TAP gap is not included here, but what we are reflecting in, in the sense that the additional tuition that we're asking, with the $34.2 million that we're counting on here, that's net of what we would have to cover from, from the additional TAP gap. So a $250 increase in tuition generates more than $34 million, but we're only counting on 34 towards our request because we know that the difference we have to cover for the TAP gap.
Matt, first of all, I think it's fabulous, obviously, that you're supporting faculty with a request for a reduction in workload, but I have a couple of questions. One, is this, is this what you're foreseeing as a permanent reduction in workload or are you talking about initiatives that would temporarily reduce it, Allah's support for research on a one-time basis?
Right, it would be permanent, but again, it's, it's contingent on us reaching agreement with the union as, you know, as part of the next round of work.
So the additional funding?
Not unilateral?
No. Well, I'm sorry, trustee, but when you say unilateral, you mean for every, every faculty member? I think that that has to be, those are part of the details that have to be worked out because it's, it's not currently, it's not currently consistent across the board that every single faculty member at a senior college is working 21 hours workload. There are some that get release time to maybe do administrative functions, some that have release time for research. But, but those issues are the things that would have to work out as part of the, as part of the discussion with the union.
And that goes to my second question, which is that we're asking for this for New York City and it's in the column for additional senior college operating support. Are we not envisioning a reduction in workload for the community college faculty?
No, that's a very good point, and yes, this $35 million would be in support of a workload reduction for both the senior colleges and the community colleges. We don't know what the distribution of that will be yet because we don't have the formal agreement with the union as to how that will be done. So we decided for simplicity purposes, we'll put it all in the senior college column, but you raise a very good point, that, that there will be a, a significant portion of that $35 million that will go to the community college workload reduction as well, we're hoping.
But to be clear on this point, if I understand it correctly, what this aspirational budget request is saying about reduction of workload is really a reallocation of workload.
Correct.
That as faculty that's not teaching these three hours is doing what students say they need as much as that, teaching, and that is assistance in mentoring and having time with faculty by way of advising as opposed to teaching in the classroom. And that's what this aspirational request is about.
I'm not sure I followed. You're suggesting that the workload reduction?
If you, if you see this here, the teaching contract hours?
Right, the workout, the teaching workload, right?
Correct, but what's anticipated is more time for faculty to mentor, student advise in office hours and research.
Right, so that it wouldn't mean that faculty would get re, a reduction in their workload that would allow them to pursue scholarship? Just your thinking is that it would be focused on student support?
Well, I, I equate research and scholarship, but I'm really focused on advising and mentoring.
Okay, right.
And that's what this initiative's about?
Right.
Gotcha. That's fine.
Other questions?
Yeah, I just wanted to see whether, and I know that senior advisor Sean knows all about this, alternative budgets, so that we have in hand, if we don't achieve this, here is what the impact will be and here's what we will be able to achieve, rather than if we went to the city for 98 and they said, well, you never asked for anything for the last four or, four or five years, why are you asking for so much now?
Right.
What is our alternative in terms of an alternate budget?
Right.
And I'm used to looking at those documents when I was in the city council, we used to lobby one against the other, and he knows that I was really robbing on that one, well, we need this.
So, so since I'm being pointed at all?
Yes, please.
I mean, this is just a variant of the question you were asking Vice Chancellor Sapienza before. And, and the point is that it's premature in our budget process to be talking about what we'll do if we don't get this money. Right now, for purposes of this document, right now, it's, this is our budget request that we're asking, be approved by this committee and then the board this month so that we can then go work with the state and city governments as they prepare their budgets. The decisions they make during their budget processes will impact what we end up getting. When we get those answers, Matt will then propose the revised budget to deal with all the very questions that you're asking. But it's premature at this point to start talking about what we would do if we didn't get something because the budget request at this point is, this is what we would like to see the revenues be in our budget next year. And we're laying out here, if we get those resources, this is what we will spend money on. You know, examples are, are, the examples of the spending that has been talked about so far as well as the decision, if we got the money that we've requested right here, that we will freeze community college tuition next year, for example. Those are decisions that we are proposing we would like to make. The final decisions on them will actually come in June after the state and city budgets are done.
So by way of background again, just for clarifying, I know that we were earlier in the budget process because, so lay it out for me again, because given what, what senior advisor has just said, it triggers that, that we only have like one, possibly one course of action, but, for this particular meeting. But if, by way of background, if you can sort of go through the process, right? And then the second question, by way of background, is this the first time, because I don't, this is the first time I've ever seen it, but it, is this the first time that we've asked the city to support senior colleges at a greater level and the state to support community colleges at a greater level? Are we trying to look at those more as a, a full university rather than state, senior and city of, of community colleges? Because there's?
Yeah.
It seems to be moving in that direction just by the numbers and the, and the budget documents, so can you clarify that?
Right, sure.
Second question for me.
Sure, and I'll answer the second question first. We, in terms of the senior, the state support for the community colleges, we've, we've always asked, you know, I've been here for 12 years, every single year that we've had a budget request, we've always asked the state for additional support for community colleges, always. And, and it will continue to do so. The senior college, the city support for senior colleges, this is the first year that we are asking for additional support for the senior colleges. The city provides $32.3 million in support for the senior colleges. The city provides thirty-two point three million dollars in support for the senior colleges, that number has been static since nineteen ninety-five, and so we're asking for, you know, a, an additional support for this year for the senior colleges. In terms of your first question, it's, it's a good question, in terms of the, the timeframe and the process, so in January, the governor will introduce his executive budget, later in the month, the mayor will issue his preliminary budget for fiscal eighteen. At that point, once those budgets are out within a matter of days, we will issue an analysis to all the Board of Trustees that says, here's what the, this budget means for CUNY. The governor came out with his budget, here's the impact on CUNY, a few weeks after that, the mayor came out with his budget, here's the impact on CUNY, so that you'll see, going back to, again, your, your concern, the trustee courts his back, says, and the concern that trustee Clark raised, here's the impact on, on CUNY. And, you know, same will happen once the budget's adopted. When the budget's adopted in April at the state level, we'll, we'll provide an analysis to say, here's the impact on CUNY, same when the city budget's adopted in June, so that we'll keep you apprised of, of what each step in the budget process could possibly mean for the university.
And by way of one additional point of further clarification, at least for me, this budget request, twenty seventeen eighteen, I referred to a few minutes ago as an aspirational request. This is what we would like to have from the city and the state. There will come a time when we will see what those funding sources are prepared to provide, and when we learn that, we then ultimately come up with what is on page two referred to as the university adopted budget, is that correct?
Correct, that's correct.
And I take it that the adopted budget, the changes that are made in the face of the responses reflected in the state budget and the city budget, is something that this board ultimately sees and approves, is that correct?
At that, well, the adopted budget will be what the state provides for us and what the city provides for us. At that point then, we have to make determinations, say, okay, we had this request, the budget either gives us what we want in the request or it gives us something less, and then we'll have to make determinations as to how we take that state and city budget and what priorities we want to fund that were in our request.
And those are a matter of a judgment being imposed.
Right.
On allocated dollars.
Correct.
But my question is, then, when you have made those judgments as to what you as senior staff and folks running the university believe is best for the university, that then is presented to the board for the board's accord and support, correct?
It hasn't historically been given to the board as a formal resolution to say, the state and city budget have now been adopted, and here's what we want to do, and board approve it, but certainly it's reported to the board that this is what we're doing in order to manage with the resources that we have.
So that in the past, the board's acquiescence to that has been the adoption of the budget.
And a good aspiration.
And I, I, I think what this committee is suggesting, I don't mean to put words in the committee's mouth.
You can look at our faces.
Is that when the time comes and those choices are made.
Yes.
We want you to share them with us, and we want to have the ability to express our point of view about them before we have an adopted budget.
Yes.
And I would.
Yes, you know.
I would also like for the board to be able to evaluate the impact on our twenty-four institutions, if we don't get what we get and how it will be done, so that we understand the process by which the institutions get their support from us.
Yes.
What we're all suggesting is clarity and transparency about what ultimately becomes the adopted budget.
Yeah, right, and accountability.
To give me, Mr. Chairman, but one additional thing, which is that when we refer to a budget as adopted, that this board adopted affirmatively. No?
Yes.
One question, I know the last time we met, my question was about tuition and requesting more money from the city and the state, so with this new initiative, the Faculty Partnership Pursuit and Success Initiative, it's great, I think it is great, you know, that we're partnering to make sure that students are taken care of, but then I'm almost confused because the last time I asked, it was, you know, tuition is needed, tuition is needed, we need faculty contracts, we need faculty contracts, and that's what we need tuition for, but now all of a sudden we can request money from the city for this additional thing, which I think is more so a luxury, because, you know, we think the contract is something that, you know, we all agree is, is needed fundamentally around the university, and so my point was tuition can be eliminated because we can request more money from the city and the state, but that's not something being done, and then now all of a sudden we have this additional initiative, which is great, of course, but my question is, you know, how do we pick the priorities for what we're requesting money for? You know, there is that argument that, you know, students cannot afford tuition, but then, of course, it's, you know, we're trying to reduce contract hours. I would then think it's a little too ambitious, especially for the fact that we don't actually have a contract yet, maybe take it one step at a time. So I guess my question was, if the argument was that we need tuition to make up for all these things, how are we now requesting, how are we now able to request more money so freely for something extra?
Right, no, no.
Clarifying question, thank you for that. Why would we need, this is process, so lawyer and, and, and Barry, why would we have to adopt an aspirational budget at this time? Because if we're asking for the process to adopt a budget, given these are your parameters from which you're working, and now we have clarity and transparency and the parameters that you're working from, why is it necessary to adopt an aspirational budget at this time when it has to go through a process and it really is dependent on the state and the city, and then, and then we go through a budget adoption process? So I'm not sure if this is form, substance, or required by statute or something, but I, it's not clear to me.
Yeah, I'll answer that one first, then, then I'll, I'll get to Chica's very good point. So the reason that we are looking for the board to, to approve our budget request, this aspirational budget, is because the, the decision makers onto what our actual budget will be are the folks in Albany and the folks in City Hall, and we want them, we want the board to be able to say with our request, this is the university's priorities, this is what we support the university making investments in, and these are the needs that we have, and these are the costs that have to be covered. We want to make sure that that message is out there so that when the executive budget is being put together at the state level, same at the city level, when the legislature and the city council are considering the budget and negotiating that at the exec, with the executive at both the state and city, that our needs are out there, that, that they're supported by the board, and that they're aware of the investments that the board would like to make in the university. So that's, that's, that's the purpose of bringing it to the board at this point of the year.
Could I say a word, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, you may, Chancellor.
Yeah, I hope you can hear me, I apologize for not being there, I, I could not change some personal business, but I'm happy for the technology, and I didn't want to jump in because I know it's awkward to have someone on the phone, but I would probably personally take a little issue with the, the word aspirational and maybe Matt or we raised it first. I, I think, just to go back to the, the beginning, this is a statement about university strategies, priorities, goals, it's based on a four-year master plan that's been adopted now, and for the first time ever, working with this board, I think we've done something very positive, which is to have a four-year financing plan, and so this is the first year of that, but I, I think it's really important that the university and the Board of Trustees make a statement to our funding partners about where we're trying to take the university and what resources we think we need from the variety of sources proposed to fund that. And I think it's, that's an essential part of the process that we make a statement about the university's goals and how we think we get there, and that's what a budget request is in my mind.
Chancellor, I, I don't disagree with you, but this budget request is made in the context of other budgets, namely city and state, over which we don't have control.
Right.
And what we're telling those, those budget makers, and what we're telling those governments, branches of government, city and state, is this is what we, you as the folks who run the university, and we as the board that governs it, this is what we think the city University of New York needs for fiscal seventeen and eighteen. That's the statement we're making, and that's the authority you're asking for from us, as I understand.
Right.
I agree.
And let me go back to, to Chica's question, so she raised a very good point about tuition. And I pulled up this chart here on page six of the request, so to, to answer the questions as quickly as I can about tuition, what this financing plan assumes for, this multi-year financing plan over the next four years assumes that all of the constituents, all of the partners that we have, whether it's our funding partners at the state and city, whether it's the students, whether it's the university coming up with administrative efficiencies, that everyone has some skin in the game and everyone's contributing. What I will point out, though, is on this chart on page six, that the tuition component is going up by the smallest percentage increase. Tuition's going up by two point three percent, the overall budget would go up by six point seven percent, and the state and city would go up by, by more than what tuition is. So while we are asking the students to, to pay more, we are reducing the amount for the predictable tuition policy, reducing the term from five years to four years, and we're asking the state and city to contribute, and the university through administrative efficiencies to contribute a lot more than what's being contributed through tuition in terms of percentage increases.
And just hoping I understand things correctly, because the, and this is why you mentioned the term luxury in, in the, and my understanding is that this is part of fulfilling a contractual obligation, that we did mention that in this, as part of the, of, of the contract, we will explore and find ways to get that change in the, in the, in the workforce, so that the timing, right, might be something that, that can be this year or the next year, but I don't think it's something that, that, that is a luxury in the sense that it's something that at some point we mentioned that we're going to do as part of the contract that was signed, right? Do I have that right, or do I have it confused?
That's right, it, it was agreed to that a commitment would be made by both the university and the union to, to, to work towards this shared goal.
So at some point, that needed to be funded.
Trustee Clark.
I raised it at the last meeting, on many campuses, just as I visit, part of their greatest challenge is to have students pay, because students, many are working on marginal income, and are not, they can't pay what they know owe. If we add more to it, how are they going to pay? Are, are we willing to look at only those who are able to pay come to the institution and those who are struggling, since we put their tuition as part of the budget? If they're not able to pay, then what?
Right, so, you know, one thing I, I just want to point out is, you know, two-thirds of our students won't be affected by this increase, because two-thirds of our students attend tuition free. Second thing is, we, as part of our request, we're saying if we receive the funding that we're requesting from the state and city, that we would hold community college tuition flat for next year. And then, and then the, the last thing I'll add about, about that, about that good point you raised is, one of the biggest initiatives that we have in here, one of the biggest strategic investments that we want to make in here is our Bridge to Completion Program, in which we're asking for seventeen and a half million dollars to help those students who max out on their financial aid to help them complete their degree. So we do have a significant financial aid and completion initiative as part of, as part of our request as well.
I was at the hearing just last week, and how passionate the students were about freezing tuition, one because they're unable to meet their obligation, and we are assuming that the third of the students that don't come for free are the ones who are able to pay, and I, 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 that, that argument is not one that I can buy into, because there were students came in and said that they can't pay, some are working full-time plus part-time plus coming to college, you know, we're defeating the purpose of the mission of CUNY if that is a position we take, and I'm not saying that they're not students who should be able to contribute or to pay, but how do we figure out the ones who can and the ones who can't? Is there a way for us to do that?
Yeah, I mean, I think that.
And let me just follow up by saying, one of the presidential candidates has already said that community colleges should be free and accessible, so if we are going to be charging a new fee for that, we're defeating what the goal is in terms of that. Why aren't we going to the federal government for a grant to hold over until we see what things, what things are going to be like in the year ahead?
No, and I hear your concerns, and we certainly heard the concerns at the, at the public hearing last week of, of the students, you know, as I said at, at our last meeting on October fifth, you know, we take tuition increases here very, very seriously, and I think that was reflected in the fact that we reduced the amount of the annual increases from the predictable tuition policy, and we're committing to holding community colleges flat for next year if, if the funding is there. And you're right, I mean, there are, even though students are within that one-third, there are students that face a lot of challenges. On the other hand, I think even with these increases, our university, you know, compared to other public higher institutions throughout the country, and compared to certainly the private colleges here in New York City, you know, we're an incredible, incredible, you know, incredibly affordable and will continue to be, and I think that we need to work with our colleges to make sure that those students who are in harm's way, that we find ways to protect them.
Just on that, on that point, do we have the data on the average household income of the students?
Yeah, we have that data, I don't have it.
Do we have the data on how many, one-third don't go, don't pay, or pay something?
Pay something, right.
Pay something, right, so do we have the data on how many are actually paying full tuition versus paying fifty percent, twenty-five percent? We have all that?
Yeah, we'll work with our financial.
It's just interesting to look at when we look at the context.
And whether they're eligible for financial aid, going back to the issue of international students versus not.
Correct.
New York City versus out of state. I mean, I think if we got more of a profile, that would be helpful.
All right.
Part of the issue might not be free tuition, it might be also our financial aid policies, which maybe disadvantage the students who have to attend all the time because of work, et cetera, so maybe we need more.
Okay, we'll provide that data, sure.
Trusty Farrar.
And part of, to, to repeat, part of this budget request is to hold tuition flat at the community colleges, correct?
Right.
And that may be because proportionately, a community college student pays more than a senior college student, proportionately.
Yeah, and, you know.
And we're trying to, to address that issue.
Correct, correct, no, that's, it's a fair point, and, you know, something we talked about our last meeting, that at six thousand three hundred and thirty dollars, which is our resident rate, annual rate for the senior colleges, that is incredibly low compared to other public high institution throughout the country. Community college rate of forty-eight hundred dollars for a resident student, not so much, and so we want to be mindful of that, and we want to be mindful of the community colleges compared to the maximum TAP award, which is five thousand one sixty-five-one, I'm sure we don't come close to piercing that, so, so yeah, for all those factors, I, I agree with you that we need to be more mindful of that.
One final question, and then our, our new initiative would go toward identifying those students who, for example, in community college are maxing out on their grants and are faced with the choice of either having to find the money somewhere.
Correct.
Or drop out. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And, and part of the, the master plan is to save those students within community college or senior college, and part of the master plan also is to enhance revenue here, and that is to raise additional monies. Part of the four points that the students made so well to us at that public hearing was we need other revenue sources, and I, I think part of our job is to see if we can help find other revenue sources, which includes the people of the city of New York to help us, businesses here in New York. Yes, Celia.
I have a question following up on what I had previously asked, so I had asked before why we couldn't separate tuition from the budget, in essence, why couldn't we just approve the budget without tuition increases? And my worry is that if we get authorization from the state to raise tuition, but we don't get the rest of it, we're going to fall short.
Yeah, I mean, I think, again, as we said earlier, with, with the. Yeah, I mean, I think, again, as we said earlier, with the entire budget, we have to see what the agreement is at both the state and the city level, in terms of our overall budget, but, you know, tuition is one, is our second largest funding source, and I think it's important to include what we are requesting in this formal budget request, and not have it as a separate item, because it is, is the second largest source of funding for us in this university, so I think it's critical that we have it in there.
Trustee Clark.
Yeah, do we have on record from each of the institutions outstanding balance that students owe, and that the colleges are not able to get in, because the students are not able to, and is there a policy that if they don't pay by a certain time, they have to drop out? What is our real policy with that?
There are policies on that, that if students owe an outstanding balance, they are not able to register for the next semester, and there are certain key dates in every semester that students have to pay their bill by, so there are policies, and there are deadlines and time trains for, for the students.
Philo.
Just, just, again, unpopular topic on the tuition increase, but perspective, right? You were talking about additional sources of revenue. In the case of Queens, and I'm actually speaking from the college that probably has the largest number of students that would have to pay, right, because we have probably the smallest number of students who receive both TAP and Pell, comparing the system, it is easier for me to go to a donor to get scholarship money to make up for that gap, right, than it is for me to go and say, if we don't get the tuition increase, for example, that would be a three point seven million gap in my budget, that would affect capacity to hire agents, to hire advisors, things for which it is much more difficult to get outside dollars for, right? So, in this budget of difficult choices, right, the, our capacity to get funding for some of the things that are not scholarships is much more limited, so it's easier for us to make up ways to support the students that might be affected from the increase, those who have to pay, than it is for us to then make up the potential holes in the budget that would be there if that funding didn't become available, so I just want to put that to perspective.
Any other questions or comments? So, we have on our policy calendar, the consideration of the resolution which is in front of you, and I will now move for the approval of action item number one on the policy calendar, which is the resolution to support the fiscal twenty seventeen eighteen university budget request. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Celia.
I just want to mention why I'm going to vote no, because I'm looking at it historically, right? We're not just looking at a hundred dollar increase, we're looking at the increase over the last few decades. I, I think it's very easy to go to students and say, well, you, you know, we have a shortfall, or we can't make up this money, or it's easier for us to ask students to pay for it than it is for the university to think of different ways to continue to provide services to students, and again, we're talking about low-income, working-class students, and primarily students of color.
Thank you. I'll now call for a vote, all those in favor, please say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
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 All those opposed?
Nay.
I just want to abstain for now, because the tuition, especially for the community colleges, is something that I want to explore as a colleague, to see whether in fact I can get a number, and I can, I can seek the funding, at least to keep the community colleges whole, so I personally am abstaining, not because I object, but because I want to explore ways in which to be able to support the community colleges, and if I can get a number and a document, I will walk it myself to the places I need to walk it, in order to see what I can do.
Thank you, and thank you all very much. We will now go into executive session and address the information item on the agenda, and thank you all for joining us, and you'll come back on the record after this discussion. Thank you. And now returning to public session, and before I move to adjourn, let me just say, I thought the discussion of this committee was a very rich discussion, a helpful discussion to all of us, I believe, and thank you all for coming to this additional meeting, and look forward to the Board meeting on Wednesday. With no more items on our agenda, I move to adjourn this meeting. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.